So we worked it out, it was about two, three weeks ago. And now it's the same.
Hi Jenny.
Jalen, me and Chief.
Yeah, I used to do that in the police department when we were kids.
Are we good? Glad mics?
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled city council meeting for May the 20th. If you could all stand with us and join us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up, roll call.
Mayor Bellinger.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hagan.
Here.
Councilmember Engle.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Strowman.
Here.
Thank you. First up, we have a few presentations tonight. First up is our citizen of the month. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This month, we received a nomination for a very deserving recipient for citizen of the month. They, of course, are all deserving, but this nomination is in a different category. And I will just read a little bit from the Escalon Times article that was written in February of this year. Juan Carlos Aviles, on January 30th, 2024, noticed his customer clutch the counter and slouch over. Seeing the change, Aviles was able to hold the customer up and keep him from falling. The customer then lost consciousness and stopped breathing. It was then that Aviles really jumped into action. He began chest compression CPR, which revived the customer. From the postmaster, Postmaster Crandall, who watched the episode using the film from the lobby cameras, stated, "I think Juan Carlos may have saved the man's life." Juan Carlos was calm and acted accordingly, stating, "I didn't panic then, I just felt like I had to act in the moment." So for this, we are recognizing him after a nomination as citizen of the month, and I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, for the proclamation.
Thank you so much. And if we could have Juan Carlos come up to the podium real quick, if he is here. Just wanted to say this certificate is awarded to Juan Carlos Aviles for his heroic actions that saved a senior resident in medical distress on January 30th of this year. You exemplify exceptional dedication in making a positive impact on our community and putting others before yourself and earning the title of citizen of the month. So we have a... Next up, certificate of recognition.
Okay, so it is clear now that great citizens can be of all ages. Recently, Caleb K., 13 years old, located an unmarked envelope containing a significant amount of money. Caleb, instead of keeping it for himself or anything other, proceeded to do the right thing by turning the envelope into the Escalon Police Department, showing great character in that move. So for this, we'd like to recognize him with a certificate of recognition.
Caleb, if you want to come to the podium real quick. Just from the council over here, we just wanted to say that you exemplify what it means to be a great young individual in our community. We look forward to you spreading the word to the rest of your friends and family as well and continuing that trend. And we have a certificate for you in recognition of that. We have a few other folks that would like to tag along with our citizen of the month. We have Supervisor Rickman that is in the building.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me to be here today. You know, I read the article in the Escalon Times, and I want to say thank you to Mr. Strowman or Councilmember Strowman for letting me know about the event tonight and about the heroic efforts of Mr. Aviles. And, you know, it is a big deal. You know, we all see on TV and on the news how some people just stand by, they have their video cameras out, and they just watch, and they don't do anything. And this isn't what Mr. Aviles did. You know, he took action. And I think, you know, one of the reasons such that Escalon is such a great town, because you have residents like Juan. So on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the approximately 800,000 folks that we represent in San Wink County, it's my honor to present this certificate in recognition to Juan Carlos Aviles for May 2024 Escalon Citizen of the Month in recognition of your quick actions on January 30th of this year to recognize that an Escalon senior was having a medical emergency and needed immediate assist, preventing him from falling and rendering CPR, which resulted in reviving the gentleman, who then began breathing on his own. Your selfless actions are commendable, and your brave deed is appreciated by the citizens of San Wink County. The San Wink County Board of Supervisor, thank you for your heroic efforts. And this date, by me.
You can go ahead and stay at the podium, because we have one more for you. Our fire department is coming up to have a chat.
You know it's fine.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. I'm Rick Melo, Fire Chief of the Escalon Consolidated Fire Protection District. Like Supervisor Rickman said, Juan Carlos did something that a lot of people don't do. He got involved. So on behalf of the Escalon Consolidated Fire Protection District, we'd like to present Juan Carlos Aviles in recognition of your heroic actions on January 30th, 2024, with a certificate of recognition. And also, and this is kind of a big deal for us, this is our 110th anniversary challenge coin. And we don't just give these away to just anybody. So on behalf of us, and this is how the military does it, we do a handshake. So on behalf of us, we thank you. Thank you for getting involved and taking action. Thank you, everyone, for having me.
Thank you. Last presentation for the night is the Chief of Police Badging Ceremony. City manager.
Okay. So, thank you, Mayor. As mentioned, today we have a special badge pinning for the newly appointed Escalon Chief of Police, Robert Hargraves Jr., the city's 10th Police Chief since incorporation as a city. So I'll just read a few words. Chief, in my opinion, has done a fantastic job in the less than two months in the interim role and impressed during his two lengthy stints as acting chief prior. As you will see in his biography that I'll read later, he has impressed at each stage in his career with the city. His knowledge of the city, the police force, the rules and regulations, his willingness to jump into new situations, even ones unfamiliar or not customarily the role of an officer of his rank, and to learn the issue has led him to where he is today. Further, his vision of the department and desire for continual improvement, as well as his determination to work with the force, but make the tough decisions when needed, is a recipe for future success. So a little on his biography. Now Chief, Hargraves was hired as an officer with Escalon Police Department on March 1st, 2005. In 2007, he made FTO or passed FTO. In 2011, he held an acting sergeant position. Later, in 2016, he was promoted to detective and then promoted to sergeant in 2020. And in that role, he was named acting chief for two stints in 2023 and 2024. He is now joined today by his wife Laura and his daughters Isabel and Natalie. And I understand that Natalie is going to be doing the pinning? Or maybe the daughters?
Congratulations. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you. I hope I don't disappoint you.
I don't think you can. All right, next up is our consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and act upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or a member of the public for specific consideration. And before we get to these items, staff has a couple of amendments to a couple of these items before we move on for action. Let's give the folks here a chance to get out of the room before we discuss those changes.
I don't know. We'll see. I don't know if that's where I put my money. I'd appreciate it, though.
All right, well, you're...
That was nice while I lasted.
City manager French.
Okay, I think we can proceed without our police chief here. Okay, it has been brought to our attention by a council member that the amounts that we have in the two projects, so this is for items number three and four, these are the construction-related projects, the St. Clair water line replacement, as well as the Escalon Avenue pedestrian crossing project, that the amounts indicated in the staff report for the change order authorization are probably outside of a normal project limit. Closer to project limit is 10 to 20%. This is a practice that we are looking into a little bit and kind of how we got there. But what staff is recommending at this point is that we modify that change order authorization to 10% of each project amount, and then actually include that in the motion with the items, if that is the council's desire.
All right. Before we move on to that, is there anything the public here in the room would have to have consideration on our consent calendar if we move to the council level? All right. Council level, any questions, comments, concerns about our consent calendar based on these updates?
I'd like to pull four, please.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar items one, two, three, five, six, seven, and eight with the amendment that was noted previously by the interim city manager.
Thank you.
I'd second that.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item number four, Councilman Walker.
Okay, so item number four is the Escalon Avenue pedestrian crossing project that we had looked at in March on that list of projects for us to consider. In March, it had read that this is the McHenry Crossing striping and pedestrian safety zone, and is to improve safety of pedestrian crossing on Escalon Bloat, near Escalon High School, and Heritage House by creating a new crosswalk with Center Median to provide safe space for pedestrians, as well as improve signage near Heritage House. And so there is a crossing at Heritage House to access the community center and Hogan Ennis Park, and it needs improvement. It does need improvement, and it's not very clearly visible, and vehicles are flying into town from the north, and it's not very, it's not as safe as I'd like to see it. It's difficult to cross. I am a person that uses the parks on a regular basis, and there's a couple of crossings in Escalon that I do have to stand for several minutes, and I would not trust sending a child to cross that to go to the park. And so when this project came across in March, I did think that this project was intended to improve the safety when crossing to access the community center and the park for its use. And so I'm interested in achieving that goal with this project, as we had discussed in March. So its current location is at Heritage Church, and it crosses to the EHS soccer field, that sidewalk there. And it's on the opposite side of Arthur Road, and does not achieve this goal as it sits right now in that location. And actually makes a third crossing in a very small amount of time from the Heritage House to Heritage Church to Yosemite. So we would have all of those lined up there. And my impression was this was being able to access the community center and park so that we can have just more access to that and improve the safety. So are we still able to make changes if we don't approve this now, to change this location so that we can achieve the accessibility of the community center and park?
To answer that directly, I mean, I think most things are possible through the direction of the council. We have gone out to bid, we have received an award. It would not be uncommon for us to cancel that bid if that was the direction of the council. So yes, modifications can be made. Now, changing the project to a different location or something like that may take additional engineering, additional planning, that type of thing, and would not be easily transferable, so to speak.
So as that was the, what is the purpose of this particular location if it's not giving access to that park? And it's kind of going just from sidewalk to church?
Yeah. So a number of comments that we have received is there's a number of crossings at high school football games and other times when people use the high school fields in an unsafe location. People, spectators, will park at the church across the street and then walk across to the high school fields. You know, we feel these crossings, these safety improvements are not mutually exclusive. They are additive. The more we can slow traffic along that corridor, the better. So this was one thing that came to our attention and an option that we would like to, well, staff is recommending that we explore.
Okay, so this is overflow parking for EHS? Is that pretty much what we're saying?
It's individuals who attend the football games that park at the church.
It's another safe crossing, though, because crossing Arthur going north and south is safer than crossing Escalon Bloat to a certain extent. So it is a secondary ability for us to cross Escalon Bloat.
So I would argue that Arthur is not safe to cross.
With a stop sign?
Yeah, coming out from Arthur from Brennan, people are speeding down that road, and a lot of times don't even expect kids, especially if there's not a big thing going on at the community center. They're not looking for kids crossing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I ask a question of staff.
Please.
So, City Manager French, you mentioned throwing the bids out and rebidding. I will tell you that that does nothing but cost the city money, because when a bid hits the street, the two bidders that bid the project, they know each other's numbers now, and now it's going to drive the cost up. So rather than throw the bids out, I understand that we've, you and I have had a discussion regarding the change order authority. Why don't we, who was the designer, I'm assuming it was Ardua? Why don't we just have Ardua issue? Well, it's an engineering supplement. So in the architecture world, it's known as an ASI, but engineering supplement to this project, and we can incorporate the suggestions that Councilor Walker is including in this. I understand it would be increasing the cost, but why wouldn't we just do the same thing at the existing crossing at the community center, put an island in the middle to help our senior community that's trying to walk from Heritage House over to the community center? Instead of throwing all the bids out, going through a whole redesign process, you can just issue a supplement to the project after it's already bid, if that's okay with the rest of the council?
Yeah, I mean, I think we take direction first, and what I was outlining was not a suggestion, it was laying out the options in front of the council. If there is a desire to see a different intersection or crossing improved, it may require redesign. I will read from the staff report, this project, which the bulk of it is the crossing between the church and the high school, the project also includes micro-surface seal and re-striping of the project limits, upgrading a second crossing north of the median island, and an additional pedestrian safety signage. So we have signage that is not best practices, it's not unsafe, but it's just older technology in terms of the brightness of those signs. And so part of this project, which is to largely install the median, is to upgrade the signage at the crossing by Heritage House as well.
Frankly, that's what we talked about on March 18th. I mean, everything you just described. Personally, I think the council thought it was a good idea then. I still think it's a good idea, especially if it's going to cost us additional money.
I don't think anybody's objecting that it's a great idea. It's just, I thought, like Councilor Walker mentioned, when it was mentioned in March, we were also going to make some improvements to assist the residents from Heritage House, and doesn't seem like...
Which is in this project.
Okay.
It is.
So we are doing some improvements to that, because looking at this, the cover sheet, can you talk about what the improvements are currently in the project for Heritage House?
So re-striping the crosswalk so it's brighter, and then new signage, which is brighter at the Heritage House crossing.
Okay.
Flashing light signage, which is brighter and more visible.
It just doesn't have the island option.
No, an island does not work there because of the left turn movements.
Okay.
At driveways.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought that we were just ignoring the Heritage House improvements.
No.
My comment is also, I know you're saying the seniors there. It's more kids that I'm really worried about. And I would like that park, that's our park, that should be accessible to people on foot, leaving the high school, leaving El Portel, wherever they need to go. That is our park. That's the only ball field available at this point. But a lot of us parents don't feel safe sending our kids after school to be able to access that as pedestrians. And as a, you know, I've been a person to chaperone several high schoolers from park to park in Escalon, and that's one that we don't utilize on purpose because it is dangerous to cross. It takes a long time for cars to even stop, even when there's 20 to 30 of us standing there. It's difficult to see and for us to cross. So that's the goal, that's what I would like to see as the goal of this project.
So what other improvements were you anticipating besides re-striping and improved signage?
Well, I thought that was going to be the major, like a flashing light, like when you're pushing the button, you get a flashing light so that traffic can see it and stop as they're coming in north on Escalon Bloat, at the very least, a flashing light.
Isn't that...
That's what he said we're doing, correct?
Yeah, he said that's included in the project.
And it's an overhead, it's not on the side on one of the...
The Heritage House one. So there's existing overheads there, and we are upgrading the signage to be more visible, brighter.
As a, like a stop sign, like a stop light, sorry, in that caliber?
So it's not the, there is an overhead. There's a HOCS system, which is like your red light signage for pedestrian crossings. We do have overheads, you know, what, 50 yards on each. So as you're approaching the crosswalk at Heritage House, there is a overhead sign that says, you know, crossing ahead, basically, which flashes. And then at the crossing on the sidewalk, there is additional signage that, you know, basically notifies the motorists that there's pedestrian crossing. Both of those signs will be upgraded to be more visible and brighter.
Will it be a red as well as a yellow?
No.
It does not stop. So it is not like the Oakdale ones on 108.
It is not a HOCS.
Yeah, it's not the HOCS system.
Yeah.
How much did we budget for this project?
I do not, so I don't think this one made it into the budget by the last, when we had our contract consultant. But we do have the resources available to fund the project.
I'm not opposed to having some sort of safety measure on home football games, which is what this looks like. It's about five to 10 Friday's a year out of 365 days a year, and some sort of mobile light system that we can put up, or some sort of, you know, employee helping with the crossing. I'm not opposed with safety on those nights. I just think for five to 10 days during the year, this is a bit much to give overflow parking to Escalon High School. Like, I just think that we can do this in a different way.
I would say it's probably more than just football. It's flag football, it's soccer. I'd use that as well.
Is the school district, since this benefits the school district, are partners at the school district contributing any funds towards this?
They are not, no, at this time, they are not participating.
I believe we gave direction to staff to work on that one way.
I know, just thinking. I mean, they get the benefit.
They're going to make their own improvements.
I was not under the impression that this was the location when we had talked about it in March. This was not my impression.
I'm trying to remember the split of the project. I want to say close, I don't want to provide a number, but a good portion of the total project cost, the 300,000, is going towards the signage at the existing crossing. The concrete work at the new crossing, the high school crossing, is inexpensive comparative to the signage improvements. And again, I don't have that split on the top of my head here, but a good portion of that is to upgrade the existing crossing.
So what you're looking for is the HOCS system with the stopping traffic, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah. I mean, there's, you know, there's too much risk as the group, the stroller group crossing right now. And that's fine, they opt for Dinosaur Park, which is on the other side. But I would really like it if we would be able to use the park. We spend all this money. It looks beautiful. Our Public Works has been doing a great job out there, and I really would like, and we have newer bathrooms out there. We've done all of these improvements, and it's just difficult to access for kids to use. And that's it. I just want to make sure, that's what I want to do, is the intention is to improve the accessibility for pedestrians to the playground, to the park, and for the community center as well.
So last year, before the crazy inflation rates, I know that the HOCS system was roughly about $350,000 per location. So that would add an additional roughly $350,000 to this project, which in that case makes sense to rebid the project. What's the rest that council feel?
I would say we don't have the extra $350,000 for our HOCS system at the current moment, based on our budget situation.
This isn't coming out of our budget.
I'm not sure where the extra 350 would come out of, is my point.
Do you know the actual distance between the two crosswalks? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know the exact distance. It's between 50 and 60 yards. I can get you guys a number tomorrow, definitely.
That's more than 100, at least I'd bet. I'm looking at a semi photo, if you were to take the football and turn it.
Let me Google it, I'll give you an answer.
I'm looking at a Google picture, it's like, that's more than 100 yards. Based on where they would put that.
Then the same to Yosemite.
It's more to Yosemite. Yosemite is even more than the distance between here and here. These are closer and longest.
Roughly 155 yards.
Between the two?
Between the two.
Mayor Pro Tim, you're being pretty quiet tonight. This is right near your office. What do you think?
I'm just listening.
Well, we can't put a median in there because of the entrances to Hardeston businesses in the area. Well, we can't put a median in there because of the entrances to Heritage and businesses in the area. And closeness to an intersection in Miller, I'm sure there's some engineering issues there. I think personally, it's a good first step. If we wanted later to look at HAWK system throughout the town, then maybe. But I don't have a problem with the project as it sits myself.
So I, I see both situations, quite frankly.
A quick question for you. How bright are these lights? Are they pretty bright, like?
There are intensity numbers, but again, we don't have the exact number. But the intensity, so what the lights that we have on there now are considered commercial grade in lighting. But what the lighting we have now will not get any brighter. So we're actually changing it to where they will get brighter than what they have now. So we're going to the brightest that we can actually get without hindering pedestrians and vehicles driving by. Because you can't, there's a point to where it gets too bright, and you end up blinding somebody, we get reflections. So we are trying to maximize the intensity of the light with these new ones.
Fair to say as bright as it can be legally.
Legally.
It's as bright as the most obnoxious car that follows you too close with the new headlights.
So the current lights that we have, you know, sort of have four to six slivers of lights in the sign itself. The model that we're going with has lights in the sign, but also has, you know, kind of beacon lights almost, that flash alternating below the actual signage. And so those are brighter than the ones that live in the plane of the signage.
So how about this? How about if we allow this project to move forward, but in the process of doing this project, we ensure that if the city were to ever find the additional funds, that we at least put in the infrastructure to support an upgrade to a HAWK system later on down the road if needed?
Is there anything new that we would need for that, other than power, that would be there for the sign, for our HAWK system?
Another pole.
Yeah, but there is more equipment that will be needed for, yeah, some upgrades, for sure.
How significant, like talking $100,000, are we talking like?
That's hard to say now, until we actually, we could, we'll have to figure out the size of wiring we have out there, power, how close it is to get to, so it's kind of hard to say.
That's why I said just the infrastructure. So make sure we have the conduits, we have a spot that we can put a pole in. And then if this solution, we're hearing issues that it needs improvement, then council can look at a HAWK system, but at least the conduits and the infrastructure is in.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, you can, you never go wrong forward-thinking, I think. But not having the money available kind of makes it a moot point at this point. But thinking forward with the potential, I think that's logical.
Are the lights comparable to the lights in front of Orlando's? Are those the same?
Similar, but again, these will have more lights like Mr. French was saying. The ones on 120 have less lights than the ones that we will be purchasing for Escalon Belota.
Because of the two flashing lights underneath, as well as the flashing diamond. That's what they're saying.
That this is an overhead.
Right, but then by the crossing, you have the diamond. And as the diamond's flashing, there are also strobes underneath it that are flashing.
Right, on the side, on the sidewalk.
Correct.
And I just can't agree with agreeing to spend some future money without knowing what the priority of the city is. Obviously, we have huge budget items that we have to tackle. Where we talked about and came up with a solid idea, it's here before us to let it go forth. And we're stopping it. And it just doesn't make any sense to me. If we want to talk about planning some money for the future, we have a lot of other things we could be spending money on, and we're just going to start earmark money for future projects or upgrades to projects that we're already doing? It doesn't make fiscal sense to me, and I'm not sure why we're still talking about this. It's 150 yards, there's access to cross from two crosswalks, one across the street from the community center and one across the street from Heritage House. There's plenty of opportunity that we are making a safer place to cross. And we're wanting to spend more money. I mean, it just seems ridiculous to me. I don't know, I'm sorry if I'm getting frustrated, but I don't even know why we're still talking about it.
I can answer that question, Councilmember Engel. It's because this crosswalk right here that we're looking at on the screen is a major safety concern for our citizens.
And we're addressing it.
By light.
But this isn't general fund, right? This is Measure K, correct?
It's not Measure K, but it is part of our transportation funding that we receive.
Okay.
It seems logical to me for the project to move forward how it is, but at the same time, you know, if you want to lay some extra conduit in there, I mean, that's insignificant cost-wise. So that your project is, in theory, if there ever was funds available, that would be available, you wouldn't have to tear up the whole road again.
I guess, though, if we spend the money and we determine that what we put in there now works, we've spent money, time, and effort on something we're never going to improve. That's the other side, that's the other side of that coin is, if what we have works and functions, we will never make use of the additional conduit, poles, you know, ballards to be able to put a new pole up, or whatever it is we need for the HAWK system.
But the cost of conduit is very, very minimal, very minimal, put in the ground there.
I just, and Justin's going to jump in here, too. I just wanted to put this on the screen so we knew. In a manner, we do have an overhead system, and you can see the first signage here, overhead, leading up to the actual signage at the crossing, which is, you know, further into your screen there. HAWK systems, I think, have a place, absolutely. What a HAWK system would do, rather than laying additional conduit, we do have electricity in the area, it would just, it would be a rework of this, what you see here.
So you're saying we wouldn't need conduit? If that ever hypothetical situation ever happened?
So a HAWK system, instead of kind of the staggered, is one overhead. And so we would just have to figure out where we do have the electrical lines now, and then figure out how it would work. You know, HAWK system is one solution here. We do have, you know, kind of a cousin solution to it present. You know, we'd be happy to take direction from the council to improve the overall safety of crossings in general, you know, independent of the solution as we move forward, if that was the direction of the council.
Okay, ask a quick question of Public Works. What's your opinion on this conduit stuff? You think it's-
That's what I wanted to get ready to say, because I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding. With the current project that we're providing, there's not going to be any, other than down by the median, there's not going to be any road work or anything toward putting in infrastructure. The infrastructure is there. We would may, what Mr. French is saying, what I was getting at, we may have to pull all new wiring out, what we currently have, redo some of the junction boxes we have there. But we should not have to dig into the road or relay pipe or add to it. It would just be redoing what we have. And then if the junction box or the box aren't big enough, it's upgrading those types of things. Taking out the wiring, putting in new wire.
So if I have this right, hypothetically speaking, if there was this HAWK system upgrade in the future, we wouldn't have to dig the road up, we'd just have to use the existing conduit we currently have?
That is my understanding with the situation. Unless construction laws changed or anything else, what we currently have, we would be able to put in a HAWK system if we redid things.
Okay, that's all I need.
Infrastructure-wise.
Thank you.
Justin, do we have one of these overhead signs at the opposite end, like coming into town?
Yes, we do.
And that one will be upgraded as well?
You can see it there in the, it's right there.
Where the flashing, so the flashing beacon that you mentioned, is that on the overhead, or is that on the sign at the crosswalk itself?
So the light, you were just talking about the light going down?
Yeah.
Will be at the crosswalk.
Okay.
Not the overhead pole, we won't have a light flashing down from the overhead pole. But the sign itself on the overhead pole will be highlighted, more lights on it itself. We just won't have a light shining down. That's more for pedestrians, lighten up the area on the roadway for people to walk.
So this light will flash, and then the light also at the crosswalk will flash?
Off of the sign, and then projecting down onto the roadway.
Is there a crossing currently on Arthur?
Yes, there is.
Arthur, there's striping.
Yeah. There's one east and west there for the community center, and then there's one north and south there on Arthur, Escalon Belota.
Have we reached out to the school district? And do they know the plans to do this project right now?
Yeah, yes, they are making improvements to the fence to be able to accommodate the crossing there, and other improvements, I think.
Potentially have walkway from there to the field itself, too.
Can you look at the location of the crossing that we're, like, turn around? The other crossing, right there, okay. From that parking lot across is what we're talking about.
Chief, didn't we have an incident there last year where a child was hit by a car trying to cross?
Last year, no, earlier this year, there was a kid that was hit down further towards, between La Mesa and Cougar. He was running across while traffic stopped southbound, the southbound lanes. He went through the southbound traffic, and there was a vehicle going in the turn lane. And he ran out in front of the vehicle traveling in the turn lane and got struck. That was earlier this year, not aware of any last year.
There's a traffic light there with crossing, like, that's a full light at that intersection?
He crossed north, far north of the crossing. It was actually north of Lilyian that he was trying to cross.
We talked to the seniors at Heritage House about these improvements at all?
Not specifically. We were out there touring, and we talked to one who happened to be at the park while we were kind of, you know, scouting it out. But we have not specifically spoken with the seniors about these improvements.
The only reason I ask is because I've been approached by a few seniors that live there that said that they are not comfortable crossing Escalon Belota to attend the senior lunch program or the senior fun bunch because of the crossing situation. I would recommend that we do these upgrades and see if it works, see if it's an improvement. And if it doesn't, then we can, I'm sure that these signs can be reused, maybe to make improvements along 120 and Elizabeth, if a different upgrade would be needed. I like, will you put the signs in and throw them away?
Is that a motion you're making?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the project as conditioned. Actually, we have no conditions, so.
Just the upgrades that we made for the prior 10% contingency update.
One second, that's my motion.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries for one. Next up, staff communications for April. Who's first?
Start on this side.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have finally got the budget ready.
Awesome.
Yay. So I propose that we have a meeting on June 4th at 6:00 PM to present and share the budget, and get any community input that we can, and of course, council's input. And we go forward from there. We're a little behind on our timeline because of the fact that we've kind of condensed this into such a short amount of time. So next year, we hope to have a full schedule that we can put out for interactive comments from.
Thanks for all your effort on this.
Yes.
It has been my pleasure. That is what I have for our basic staff. Mr. French, did we have anything else to add?
Nope.
That's it for me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can I make a, can I ask a question? Previously, didn't we talk about doing two budget workshops? Last year, didn't we do two budget workshops? So that way, if a community member, or maybe it was one in the afternoon and one in the evening on the 4th, that way, if folks can't attend the meeting in the morning, they can attend the one in the, or the one in the afternoon, do one in the evening?
I'm sure we could find the time for that, if that is your desire to have that. I think because of the condensed timeline that we had, we were kind of happy to find the time for one.
I would just, I would just think that we should probably at least try to schedule one for the afternoon at 3:00. That way, if there's any folks that don't like to drive in the evening, they can come. Chances are, no one will show up, maybe one or two will show up. But at least we're providing the opportunity for those that aren't comfortable driving in the evening.
All right, I will note that, and we will find the time for it. I don't think we had anything scheduled on that June 4th day, so that shouldn't be a problem at all.
Who's next?
So just a quick amendment on the police activity report. I forgot to change March to April. So that should be April and not March. So next off, I'd like to thank Jake Cook with Public Works. He put up some monitor mounts for the officers at the officer's workstations. Nate Viera was promoted to sergeant.
Congrats.
So, and then Unit 512 and 1117, they were put on the public surplus auction that closed on the 10th. 1117 has already been sold and has gone. The bidder for 512 fell out, and I'm trying to get in touch with the runner-ups to see if they'd be interested in purchasing the vehicle. And then on Thursday, May 16th, there was a SWAT call-out in the 500 block of First Street. In that incident, the subject claimed to have been assaulted with a firearm. In response, El Porton Middle School was placed on lockdown until the scene was secured, and two suspects were subsequently arrested, and then the lockdown was lifted and the school resumed as normal.
Thank you to you and our staff for everything you did that day.
Thank you.
I do have one question for chief.
Yes.
Chief, I got a call from a concerned citizen the other day saying that we were giving citations for jaywalking. Do you know anything about that, or can you elaborate?
So yes, we have been getting a lot of complaints about pedestrian traffic over in front of the high school. Like was mentioned earlier, there was a juvenile that was hit there jaywalking, ran out in front of a vehicle, because he ran through traffic. And so there have been crackdowns on students that are jaywalking, walking outside the crosswalk, and some citations have been given out, yes.
So primarily, high school students just kind of darting out in the street?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are we giving them like warnings prior, or are we just?
I believe that there have been warnings given, and it escalated to the point where citations are now being given. But all year, Officer Harrison has been out there, and he has been giving warnings, and the warnings have been somewhat useful, but there are some students that still flout and continue to break the rules, and so now it's-
Sorry, SRO officer is the one that's been doing this?
Yes.
Okay, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. The only thing I have quickly is this week is National Public Works Week. So I just wanted to pass along a big thank you to my crew. I don't thank people in the city. I mean, we do get a lot of recognition, but I don't think everybody realizes how lucky we are to have the eight of us that are in Public Works, how dedicated they are, how prideful they are, and how willing they are to do the things they do. So I just want to say thank you to them, because of them, I'm in this seat, and they make me look good. So again, thank you, very proud of them, and look forward to the future ahead of us. Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Public Works.
Sure.
So, Justin, can you please remind the public on the weed abatement procedures? We are moving into summertime, and so if there's a lot that shows overgrown weeds or a fire danger, how do, what do residents do about that?
What they need to do is call into City Hall or come by City Hall. There's a form they can fill out or let us know at that point. We will go out, take a look at it, and take a picture of it. If we feel like it is something that needs to be taken care of, we'll send out a letter at that point. I believe fire also does the same thing to get those weeds down. So we're less contacting City Hall in person or on phone to get the ball rolling.
There are three that I would like to just bring to your attention. Obviously, the one that we've talked along, Campbell Avenue. That field is a fire danger waiting to happen. And then there's one on Lydia, and then also one at the corner of Lydia and Brayton that the weeds are about four feet tall. And I'm just concerned, as we're moving into the summer, that it's a fire danger ready to tick off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one quick question, uh, for Public Works?
Yes.
Um, I got word that there's, um, significant leak or some sort of a pipe break on, on Fisk Road.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know much about what's going on there?
Yeah, I know, my crew was there this morning and repaired it, so the leak has been taken care of.
Awesome.
Everything's packed and, uh, the soil underneath the road is pretty saturated, so it will take a few days for it to drought before we're able to put asphalt back. But the road is drivable and that leak has been repaired.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Who's next?
Okay, I am. So, uh, wanted to give an update on the Main Street Park project. Uh, we are currently working with BNSF in regards to either a future sale or a longer term lease, something to that effect. They're a big organization, let's say, and it takes some time to kind of get through that process. Um, but we are following up on the requests of, of the council and the community in terms of discussions with BNSF. At the same time, we are working with a retained consultant, Odell Engineering, who are, you know, really fantastic landscape architects to help us design the project and the park in general. We have an opportunity through this grant to really look at what Main Street Park is and what it can become, um, keeping in mind that, you know, there's a large contingent of the population that wants to see it largely the same as it is now. And, and so we are, we're looking at various options with the consultant. Um, we plan over the next month or so to bring, you know, forward to not only the council, but the community, various options for the community to look at so that we can hopefully align around a direction. We did meet recently with just, this wasn't an open meeting. We just met with the event holders, the Chamber and the Lions Club to talk with the Odell Engineering, um, for them to really download Odell on how they use the park, where they use the park, you know, and what can and can't be on the park and, um, in locations where they use it for events. So we had that meeting recently, take another month, month and a half to develop some alternatives and then we'll bring that forward, um, to the community. So that's kind of the status, so BNSF at the same time is, is alternate designs.
Are they at least talking?
Who?
BNSF.
They're, they're talking, it's just, it's, you know, many days and weeks in between. Um, parts of the conversation. Um, we do have two planning commission terms that are expiring this year, in fact, next month. We have posted these to the public to make them aware of, of the potential opportunity to apply. Applications are due next week, a week from today. Two planning commission seats. We have incumbents who we believe, uh, want to continue, but again, we, we make these opportunities available to, for all the public. And then, Celinda is really getting down, um, to the budget. Wide eyes, where, where are you going with this one? Really getting down to the draft budget, right? It's an internal budget at this point, um, and we will bring it forward, June 4th, 6:00 PM is, and potentially earlier times is when we plan to, to go out to the public and then hope to bring it to the council, June 17th. Um, it was requested at the last meeting that we go over the goals, so we do have a presentation here to walk through the goals that were in the last budget and the progress that we have made on those so far. And do I have the, what do I? Okay, so pretty title screen here. Um, I can't even read it. So, um, we talk about the goals which were adopted in October, not, you know, sort of the June timeframe, so several months later. Um, we want to work on having sort of identified end states, you know, not ongoing type goals, but actionable time-bound goals so we can really track progress. You know, a lot of the updates you'll see is, yeah, we're continuing to make progress on it, but there's no defined end state. Um, so we'll work on, um, bringing forward to you sort of tangible goals. But, um, we've made, we've made progress here. We start off with one that we haven't made progress, but the rest are, are good. So, um, one of the things that we wanted to do is, is bring forward a strategic plan, really, um, focus, you know, council's direction with staff, um, priority and work product so that, excuse me, so that we're not, you know, sort of doing things, spending time and resources outside of, um, the council's direction. And then another thing we talked about is sort of an economic development roadmap. You know, how do we diversify our economy? How do we grow, um, receiving revenues for our general fund, um, part of the budget? So the next one was explore various revenue stream options. We've done a couple of things in this regard. Staff has really taken a deeper look at the existing and previously received transportation-related dollars, determine how to put these to use and we're putting into it, you know, crossings on McHenry, sidewalk, um, projects. Um, those types of, of improvements, we're, we're trying to upgrade our, our transportation system. Staff did submit a CPF grant application through Representative Harder's office for the Surface Water Connection project, which is also a goal we'll see later. And then staff sought a loan amendment through the state for the entirety of the Well 1A project. We had about 50, 55% of the Well 1A project under a loan. We were going to pay the rest of it, um, with our development impact fees and rates. Um, so we are looking to increase that loan amount to cover the entire project. Um, improve communications with the community. City staff, um, is improving project communications. Couple examples, we did knock on residents' door near the Dent Sidewalk, um, project and Elementary School Sidewalk project to actually talk to residents about the project prior to, um, it even moving forward. And we're holding various public workshops regarding projects. Staff is meeting with businesses and organizations and really through the chief, we're exploring push notification systems to all residents. Um, we use Facebook now, we have pretty broad distribution there. Um, but we're also looking at push notification systems that work a little bit better than the existing system that we have, which requires a receiver to sign up and, and not everyone wants to sign up for, you know, a system they're not really familiar with. So we're looking at that. We feel marked increasing communications on Facebook and, um, in regards to the recreation program. Um, prioritize sidewalk improvements, again, these, the, the bowl at top are, are goals identified in the 2023, 24 budget. Prioritize sidewalk improvements on streets surrounding schools. We just talked about one, uh, Escalon Avenue pedestrian safety project as well as, um, the Dent Elementary School sidewalk infill project. Continue to pursue, uh, senior housing development, Countrywood cottages. Uh, an 18-unit age-restricted apartment project has been approved by both the Planning Commission as well as the City Council and it's in the applicant's hands to move forward with the building permit. We are working with them on that and, and we expect that here in the coming weeks or months. Continue efforts on the wastewater treatment upgrade project. We did on May 1st receive very good news in terms of, uh, our letter of compliance for our notice violation and our cease and desist order. It is not the final step, but is a great first step for us. We are now working with permitting. Um, permitting, we'll have a little more thoughts. So compliances, you know, you, we had some things that we needed to work on, that's why we had the notice of violation. Permitting is going to look at a different set of, um, parameters and, and criteria, including things like the quality of groundwater that is coming from our plant because it is a perk plant. Um, so now we're shifting our attention from compliance, very good work by our team, Tom McCoy and, and Justin and his team, um, to get a, a positive letter on compliance. Now we're, we're focusing on permitting. Um, city staff is holding frequent and continual, um, discussions with industry on the needs of the plant and ways to reduce the cost of the upgrades. And really that's exploring, you know, what things can we do on the front end um, to not require the size plant and, and the upgrades that we need on the back end. And I mentioned meeting with state permitting department. Continue to recruit and fill department head vacancies. Um, I would say in a manner, we are 100% there. We have filled the finance director, HR administrator position, which has been vacant for a number of months. And we have just very recently filled the police chief position and, um, the interim city manager and development and community service position is filled. Continue to assess recreation programs to meet community needs. Um, we have implemented early coach request communications. One of the things that we experience and, and really crunches our administrative timeframe and has impacts on the logistics is not having the number of coaches that we need for each team. So all those teams are in flux. Are they going to be 10-person teams, 12-person teams because of the number of coaches? Um, and that has really administratively affected everything. It's affected draft, it's affected ordering of the jerseys, right? It affects all these downstream, um, elements. And so we've implemented, um, an early coach request, um, communication. We're actually exploring something where we, we don't fill slots until we get coaches so that we know sort of where we are in, in the league and, and our goal. Our overriding goal is always make sure no kid who wants to play doesn't, you know, is able to play. We want to absolutely make sure of that, um, but administratively, we're trying to improve the process so it's not crunched at the end. Um, staff exploring options to add competitive opportunities, um, after the baseball softball season and perhaps the soccer season. Um, staff exploring both skills clinics for the athletes and coaching clinics for the coaches. And then, um, really trying to establish a feedback loop so we know more what is going on in, in the program, really serving the coaches, seeing what's working, what's not working, how's communication, what could be improved so that we can incorporate that feedback into our, our process. Continue to explore areas of funding for Surface Water Connection project. Um, the thing that I will mention that is not on here, the next presentation by, um, Ardura will be specifically and, and really in regards to, um, comments by the council. What are our financing options? What do those look like? Um, what would that mean for the ratepayers? So we expect that in the next couple of months. We did, as mentioned before, submit a $2 million CPF grant application request through Harder's office. And we are meeting with SSJID staff and others to really understand, you know, kind of all of the periphery elements and, um, working to, to schedule a tour with the council of the plant. So those were the items, uh, in the last budget, those were the goals. We will have more robust conversation about the intended goals at the June 4th workshops.
Thank you. Any other staff updates or are we moving to item 10?
No other staff updates.
All right, if there are no questions, um, excuse me, we'll go to item 10, the annual transit update for fiscal year 22, 23.
So we should have, oh, he's not on?
He's not on.
Okay, we had our transit operator and it looks like we have lost him.
Mr. Ando?
Mr. Ando, John Ando. So if he is not on and he does not pop in soon, we will delay this item to a future meeting and have him provide, uh, the update.
We'll postpone, we can go ahead and move on to matters presented from the audience and see if he comes back on after that. Uh, the public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. It requires action that will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. At this time, anybody that would like to come up to the podium and speak on an item are invited to do so.
Evening, folks. Curtis Russell, I reside at 1419 Alberto Lane. First of all, I want to, uh, give praise to Justin and his department. I got my fence in and, uh, as I promised, already bought five gallons, actually 10 gallons of Thompson Water Seal to, to seal my new fence that I promised I'd take care of for the next 20 years. Also want to give praise to the police chief and the great job you did for the lockdown. My granddaughter, 17-year-old granddaughter lives with us, so I get the text constantly, apprising if what was going on with the lockdown last week, great job. I want to add a little levity and then get to something a little more serious. And that is, I've heard a lot of the discussion we have and just so we know, we can't legislate and have a contingency plan for everything that goes on in the city. And certainly, safety is very important. My backyard is in Brennan, the back, my, back of my wall is Brennan Road and constantly cars racing up and down all night, so I know about the safety. My concerns with safety, safety with the people walking their dogs back there elderly and what have you. They're not going to be walking out in the middle of the street like what we're concerned with on Escalon Balota. But when you're talking about cars in excess of 80, 100 miles an hour some nights, you know, it's, it's a concern to me. But with that having been said, part of my concern is also, uh, my, uh, concern is what may be transpiring with the, uh, Murphy Ranch. And if we're going to open that up for discussion in the future, whether it be town hall meetings to address some of our concerns. Some of our concerns is us living in Belatera is the 73 houses that potentially be going in and the access roads that are going to be coming in off California and what that looks like, what that looks like exiting Belatera, get back on 120 at Brennan, what we're looking at there with, are we looking at potential signals in the future and in traffic study impacts and, and things of this nature? So anyhow, at some point, I would hope that we would open that up for, uh, a lot of concerns that Belatera, but, uh, quite frankly, city of Escalon should have for that new development. And I hope that, uh, that, uh, certainly you guys will entertain that thought about having a town hall meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just address that quickly. Uh, we are working with the applicant on potentially holding, uh, some sort of workshop or, or town hall.
Thank you.
Kurt Danzger, thank you, Jalen, and thank you for taking my call the other day and, uh, kind of, uh, joining with me on that town hall. Uh, I've taken it upon myself, start walking the neighborhood in Belatera. I imagine you've gotten a few emails, uh, already, uh, where I've handed out your email address and try to educate the people that I talk to in the neighborhood of what's going on because they don't know. And I, I wrote down the process to go to the city website to view the document and, you know, it's this long with, you know, arrows this way, 460 pages, they're not going to do it. Looking at this, remembering Irwin Street, uh, out here and the old frontier homes, uh, a town hall is really the way to go. Get the developer out there and I think you need to do this before annexation, uh, takes place because they may rethink it. You got a landlocked, uh, piece of property out there that's going to greatly impact, uh, the Belatera Landley, uh, LLC, along with other, uh, uh, homes and properties outside of that. So, uh, again, I'm going around the neighborhood, I'm trying to get a lot of feedback, uh, to the people and everybody I've talked to is in favor of a town hall meeting and they want more information. Most, half of them didn't even know what was going on over there. So rather than do, repeat the errors of the past, plenty of time to do this thing right. Let's get out in front of it, get the developer out there, make a presentation, take questions, maybe implement some of those, uh, concerns into the plans and, uh, get the community on board. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Back to Main Street Park. Good to guess that. And may I ask who you talked to in the Lions Club?
Yes, uh, Robert Swefter.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I, most people were under the impression this basically was dead except for the sidewalk. And now it says, it seems like there's more staff time, more staff time and more money spent on consultants to go back and revisit a project that is pretty much dead. So, um, I wonder if you want to spend that money still?
Make two short points, I never thought it was a dead project myself. I never thought it was a dead project myself. Secondarily, it's SSJCOG money, it's not city funds.
It's taxpayer money.
If we kill it, it'll all go to Stockton with no loss or gain for Escalon. Anybody else? All right, then we'll go ahead and close. Matters presented from the audience. Is Mr. Ando by chance back online?
He says he is, but we don't see him.
John Ando, can you hear us and can you join in by chance?
Is he texting you?
Yes, yes.
Could you call him and put him up to the microphone?
Yeah, you may just give him a call, put him up to the mic.
Is there a presentation that comes along with his discussion or is it just him giving us an update?
Yes, in your packet, he has a...
Other than that, I didn't know if we were going to show anything on the screen.
No, actually.
Okay, okay.
Hello, Scott?
Hi, John, we can hear you now.
Hello.
So it's your turn.
Okay.
The floor is yours.
At top of the evening, Mayor and Council, I'm John Ando, Transit Manager. And I'm just here to present our annual transit update.
Can you still hear us, John?
Yeah. I apologize, I'm just trying to get it up on the computer. Okay. And so every year I come before council and I provide an update on just the performance of the E-Trans transit system. And this quick summary about E-Trans, and I'm on page three of the annual report. We provide a demand response door-to-door service within the City of Escalon. And the local dialeride service also connects passengers to Riverbank to connect to Ride BS's Riverbank Dialeride for those that want to go to Riverbank or Oakdale. Furthermore, we also provide a deviated sixth route, which is Route 35, that connects the Escalon Park and Ride Lot, Almond Grove, down McHenry to Modesto, which stops at the Vintage Fair Mall, Kaiser Permanente, Sutter Gould, Walmart, and Target. We provide that three times a day, Monday through Friday, with one trip in the morning, one trip in the midday, and then one trip in the evening. We also last year launched a service called E-Trans On The Go in partnership with Uber. And as part of this program, we will subsidize up to $10 of the ride after a passenger pays a $2 upfront fare. As part of using E-Trans On The Go with Uber, they can utilize the service anywhere in Escalon to Oakdale, to Riverbank, and to Modesto. And then anything above $10 is on the user to pay. And the extent of providing this service was more like a stopgap measure when we were not able to run transit service for the month of January and February, and then to also provide additional mobility when the transit system is not running. On page five, we do receive a multitude of funding to fund the E-Trans transit system. We do not receive any general fund. We use a fund source called the Transportation Development Act. And as part of those funds, there's a local transportation fund and the Safe Transit Assistance. In addition to those funds, we do receive FTA Section 5311 as well as Low Carbon Transit Operations Program funding, Data Good Repair, and then Measure K. All of those funding sources basically comprise of the trans budget. For the last three fiscal years, we have not used much local transportation fund. And we've sent those funds to be utilized for street and roadway projects because we had an abundance of COVID relief funds from the Federal Transit Administration that covered 100% of our operational costs. Continuing on, on page eight is a summary of the E-Trans performance in fiscal years '22 and '23. Page nine is what we performed in fiscal year '23. The E-Trans transit system collectively carried 1,242 passenger trips. Route 35 was 717 of those trips. E-Trans On The Go with Uber was 30 of those trips. And then Escalon Dialeride was 495 of those trips. Ridership has been continuing to decline just because we've been unable to attract new passengers to the transit system. Primarily, we were transporting seniors, persons with disabilities, and low-income riders. And as the demand for transit has not really been increasing, our ridership as a result has been going down. And of course, the pandemic didn't help with that. We did have a contract with the San Juanfloss Regional Transit Authority up through December 31st of 2022. We then did not have service for about two months. We were able to obtain a vendor in partnership with the city at MTM Transit. And they've been providing the E-Trans transit service since mid-February of 2023. And as part of that, we were able to get a reasonable rate, which is shown on page 10 of the annual report, where we pay a monthly fixed cost and then a variable hourly rate for our services. On page 11, just to summarize the operational aspect, we do have a fleet of three vehicles. Two of them are low-floor vehicles, which makes it easier for our passengers to board the bus. And one of them is a minivan. On low ridership days, we generally put out the minivan. And then when we generally have more than five passengers on a particular trip, the low-floor cutaway gets put into service. Presently, E-Trans is fare-free. We're using Low Carbon Transit Operations Program funding to cover the cost of the fares that are reimbursed back. And we are hoping that being fare-free could help encourage more of the present ridership to make more passenger trips on the transit system, which would increase our ridership On to page 15 and 16. In the past, San Joaquin Council of Government would evaluate E-Trans's and other transit agencies' performance in San Joaquin County. With many transit operators struggling to meet performance measures, the State of California has suspended the evaluation of those performance measures pending a comprehensive review of the Transportation Development Act and how to distribute transit funding to transit agencies across the state and provide a better mechanism for evaluating performance. So we anticipate that in around fiscal year '26, after the Transit Transformation Task Force has presented their findings to the California State Transportation Agency, we should be able to get some new performance measures to better evaluate the transit system. Page 17 gives you a perspective of the overall transit performance based on previous standards. Overall, the transit budget was $255,431 last fiscal year. That yielded a cost per revenue hour of $292.65. Passengers per revenue hour are about 1.5, so we round that to 2. And the subsidy per passenger was $14.43. Some recommendations that we're striving to implement in this current fiscal year to try to grow ridership is that we are monitoring the existing service and the current operations and maintenance contracts. We're continuing to promote the transit system by distributing information to the schools, to the seniors, to low-income families that are transit-dependent. We do various community events to increase awareness of the transit system, such as our annual holiday light tour and our Stuff the Bus event in partnership with Marvell. We are pursuing other mobility strategies that might make better sense to move people in Escalon, such as the partnership with Uber. And we just recently launched a rural rental car service called Mio Car, which is a vehicle that is at the Escalon Park and Ride and that's available to residents who may want to travel within the city or to Modesto for quality-of-life opportunities. As part of our triennial performance audit, we're ensuring that data is cited accurately if possible in all reporting documents and ensuring that it's consistent. We're also striving to ensure our TDA fiscal audits are completed by the extended deadline of March 31st. We also have engaged a consultant to do an updated short-range transit plan to review the transit system's performance and offer new and creative ways on how we could provide public transit in our city. And then we're continuing to seek grants to ultimately replace our gasoline-powered fleets with battery electric vans to comply with the California Resources Board's requirements by 2030. Page 18 has kind of a summary of our performance, excuse me, our accomplishments that we were able to do last fiscal year. As it relates to other public transit services that benefits Escalon residents, the San Joaquin RTD provides two services to Escalon. One of those is VanGo. It's a door-to-door rural dialeride service that passengers can request a ride utilizing an app, and they can go anywhere in San Joaquin County, seven days a week between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. And they kind of have an Uber-like pricing structure to utilize that service. We also have the Hopper Route 95, which connects Escalon residents with Manteca and Stockton. And that runs four times a day and has timed connections for Route 35 for continuing trips to Modesto. We do connect to Ride BS Services in Modesto for further trips in San Juanfloss County. Ride BS is the new consolidated transit system, which combined Modestary Express and San Juanfloss Regional Transit two years ago. We also connect with Rippon's Blossom Express every Tuesday and Thursday at Vintage Fair Mall. And then we are active participants in the Access San Joaquin Consolidated Transportation Service Agency service. Page 20 of the annual report kind of gives a statistical summary of the participation of the various services that our residents benefit from Access San Joaquin. They are funded by 2% of Off-the-Top Transportation Development Act before it's allocated to the city. We had about two people apply for paratransit service and 27 people use the volunteer transportation program, which is called My Ride. Moving on in the annual report, some emerging issues that I just want to bring to the council's attention, which is going to be on pages 25 and 26, is that, as I mentioned, we are doing a short-range transit plan to evaluate the performance of the transit system and offer alternative recommendations on how we can better provide public transit in Escalon utilizing Transportation Development Act funds. We did receive a waiver on local transportation funds for the last three fiscal years. Per SJCOG policy, we're supposed to contribute 25% at a minimum of our LTF to public transportation. Since that waiver has expired, we're now having to contribute 25% of our LTF to the public transit system. And in the balance, 75% can go towards streets and roads. With pending changes to how rail services are to be provided in San Joaquin County can affect ultimately the overall distribution of local transportation funds to the municipalities, particularly with Valley Link, a service that would connect La Crosse, Tracy, Mountain House with Dublin Pleasant and Bart stations. As they come into play, they may be able to claim local transportation funds off the top, similar to what the Altamont Quarter Express is doing. If that was to occur, then it's likely that all jurisdictions across the county would receive lower LTF funding. We will continue to participate with Access San Joaquin to utilize creative mobility options for moving residents throughout San Joaquin County, particularly in the City of Escalon. One thing that we were able to work with Access San Joaquin this past fiscal year is allowing Escalon residents to go anywhere in San Juanfloss County for any trip purpose. Previously, it was only limited to medical trips. And that was hampering the performance of the service from Escalon residents. We will be, we are speaking quotations, to have an operator for the next year to operate the E-Trans transit system. And we'll be before council probably at the second meeting in June to seek authorization to have a contract for that operator. The City of Tracy's contract will end June 30 of 2025. We are in discussions with Tracy to participate in their request for proposals for the upcoming five-year cycle so we can get a better economy to scale for when it comes to operating our And that's really all I have as it relates to the annual report. Page 29 is an idea of the service there and the schedule. And if there are any questions of council about the transit system, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you for your report, Sean. What do we have for questions for Mr. Ando, if any?
I have a question for him.
Please.
Hey, John, this is Sean Strowman.
Hi, Sean.
I have a, so I've been approached by a few members of our senior community. And their comments to me is that Route 35 is not really conducive to them trying to achieve things here in Escalon. So one of the suggestions that has been brought up to me that I wanted to pass along to you was, you know, there are different community events, there are different food distribution programs here in the community. And as you explore different options moving into the next year, it might be prudent for us to look at like a little internal Escalon Loop program. For example, having the ability that a senior could jump on the bus to attend the senior lunch program on Tuesdays and Thursdays. A senior being able to jump on the bus on the Wednesday of every month that the senior fund bunch has their... fund bunch has their meetings. To go out to the community center on Thursdays when Escalon Strong does their food distribution, or on Fridays, going to the Pentecostal Church for the bread distribution, or quite frankly, any day a senior might have to run to Orlando's or go to Escalon Care to pick up food. I mean, I think that we're doing a pretty good job on Route 35 going into Modesto, but honestly, I feel like we're missing out on an opportunity for a little loop program here within our own community. And so I would strongly request that we look into something like that and work with the groups, like I mentioned, the senior lunch program, the fund bunch, Escalon Strong, the Pentecostal Church, Escalon Care, all these communities, to develop this little schedule that a senior can just jump on the bus and go get some food and then jump on the bus and head back home, because I think that that's an inherent need that we really need to address.
Okay. You bring up a very good suggestion, and I can start reaching out to some of those groups. I could sell you that the Escalon dial-a-ride door-to-door service, it does operate during the times of all of those events that you mentioned, and perhaps, if it helps, if I go to these events and talk to the seniors to let them know how to use the service, it's fairly easy by them just calling and asking for the bus to pick them up and take them to those destinations. I think that could help improve the mobility for those that need to access going to the church, the food bank, and the lunch program. And if we need to add more service, like particularly between the 11:00, the 11:30 and 12:30 hour, right now that's when the driver takes a lunch break, we can move that lunch break over to ensure that we're addressing that mobility need.
Well, I think the dial-a-ride might help, but, you know, what if a senior just wants to jump on the bus and go have coffee at McDonald's with Justin Collins? I mean, they need to have that ability that they don't want to take the time to pick up the phone and call somebody, they just would rather walk out their door and jump on the bus and go sit at McDonald's and have a coffee. So, I mean, we're always worth a try for dial-a-ride, but I think for convenience, it would be convenient for them to say, oh, well, I know the bus is coming at 11:15, and I can get to the community center, so I'm just going to walk over here to my little bus stop and go over to the community.
Oh, okay.
So, just a suggestion moving forward.
Okay. I'll definitely, I'll look into that, and perhaps maybe I can have further conversations with you, since I know you connect with Act of Community well.
Sure.
On how we can implement some of those opportunities.
Sounds great, John. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Andau on our transportation? Transit update. All right. Thank you very much, John, for the update. We'll talk to you the next time.
Thank you for having me, and I wish you a good evening.
Thank you. You too.
Thanks, John.
Next up, we have a group of five public hearings. We're going to bracket these into two groups, as I do live in the estates for items 12 and 13. So we're going to open up a public hearing for items 11, 14, and 15. We're going to go ahead right now and open up the public hearing on these assessments and resolutions at this time. So anybody who has any comments or concerns, you have an opening statement you'd like to make on those first?
Yeah, we'll just go into this. There's a couple-step process annually for the city to approve the assessment amounts for each district. We do have four landscape and lighting districts within the city and one benefit assessment district. So at the April 15 council meeting of this year, the council preliminarily approved the FY 24-25 Engineers Report for the districts. These districts generally fund improvements, landscape and lighting, you know, within that realm, only within that district. So there's a set boundary, and the assessment goes directly into the improvements in that district. So they fund things like electricity costs for lights, the maintenance of landscaping, irrigation, drainage systems, as well as pedestrian paths, bicycle paths, you know, fences, walls, any associated maintenance and repair. So this year, and we do have a chart here, we're taking these, you know, the first one, Belatera, Westwood, and Sunrise, you will see last year's assessment level, which is the second, yeah, the second row there, fourth row technically. The second row, you'll see the increase and the percentage increase. What we have in the chart below that is the maximum allowed assessment versus the proposed assessment. So you will see, except for Sunrise, where there is no inflator there, it is set at $121 in perpetuity now, until changed, if changed. But you will see that in the other four districts, we are between 16 and nearly 43% below the maximum allowed assessment. But you will see some increases, you know, upwards of 34%, and I can highlight a couple of those changes. We did not change the model by which we assess, we did not change the categories or the features that could be assessed, but we did add some items within, under the umbrella items, because we are finding that when a fence is down or trees need to be trimmed, walls need to be repaired, we do not have the funds available to do those repairs, playground equipment. And so we have added items like, you know, an annual collection to replace playground equipment, comprehensive street tree trimming, rubber bark replenishment and replacement, sidewalk repair for when the trees within the district's roots cause upheaval in the sidewalk. So all of these things that the payers of the assessment would expect to be repaired are now, you know, we're going to start sucking away money to make those repairs. So in the three that we are talking about, you can see here on the chart, the increase and the percent that is below the maximum assessment. With that, I, staff, would be happy to answer any questions, and we do have our consultant from Harrison Associate, Rick, who is also here to answer any questions.
Okay. So for Belatera, Sunrise, and Westwood, for anybody at this point, the public hearing is in action right now, so if there are any questions on those items, please come to the podium.
Hi. Can we put up the proposed budget for Belatera?
Just one second.
While we're doing that, I wanted to compliment you and your crew and even Grover on the tree service this year, they look really, really good, best they've looked in a long time. And again, while they're looking, sidewalk repair on Alberto, still a major problem with redwood trees uplifting the concrete there. It's a good two inches now, uneven surfaces there, so you guys marked it, you know, quite some time ago. It's really in need of getting fixed. Yeah, there's no way to span that, is there?
Let me ask my page.
Sure.
128.
I've been dealing and aware of these things since I moved out here, and, you know, we didn't have really a good landscaping handle on Belatera until Grover took over, and they've done a really tremendous job out there. They fixed sprinklers, they got bulk dead spots fixed, they really maintained Brennan Avenue, done a good job. My question is, they're under contract, and when does the contract run out?
Two years.
In two years?
Correct.
It's in good shape now, and maybe they're a victim of their own success. That's a lot of money, and I would like to see the city, on all of these LLDs, looking at ways to reduce costs, and if that's going back out to bid for different groups. I know it's a lot of work to go do that, but again, these are significant costs. When I moved here, it was just over $200 per EDU for property tax fees. Now we're 536, and it accumulates all the time, and I realize it's gone up in water, but our streetlights are stable, our electricity with MID is stable, so the things that actually move are the actual labor costs. And if we can, you know, take a look at that after two years and maybe go out to bid again, because the system has been corrected, it's fixed out there, so it's looking good. So it just needs maintenance now, and there might be a more inexpensive way to handle that. And again, Mr. Clark, I think you've done a wonderful job on these LLD presentations. They've come a long way since when I first saw them, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else on Belatera, Sunrise, or Westwood that would like to speak on those Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on those three items, items 11, 14, and 15. Bring it back to council for action at this point or discussion.
I just have a question for Public Works. Are these contracts, like Grover, prevailing wage?
Yeah, of course.
I don't see it going down, Mr. Dancinger.
Do we need to motion on 11, 14, and 15 separately, or is there...
A motion would be fine for those three.
A motion on those three.
A motion to adopt Resolution XX24, approving the Engineers Report, including confirming the diagram assessments, ordering levy of the assessments for fiscal year 24, 25, for items 11, 14, and 15 on the agenda.
I'd second that.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. At this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Haggen here for items 12 and 13. Come get me when we're done.
So for items 12 and 13, we're looking at, we're entertaining the public hearing for these two estates as far as the same topic we've been talking about. At this point, let's open it up to the public. Who wants to say anything, or? No? Anyone on the council want to talk about?
Close public hearing.
Yep, closing the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move to approve the Engineers Report, including confirming the design assessments, ordering levy and assessments for fiscal year 2024, 2025, for both the Estates Benefit Assessment District Number 6-1, as well as the Estates Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District 6-1.
I'll second that.
First and second, motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And no nays. And mayor, you can come back.
Thank you, council, for raising my cost of living for the next year.
Yeah. We're actually going to double it in the estates. We decided so.
Whatever works. Next up, council communications, future agenda items. Let's start off with Councilman Strowman tonight.
Oh, okay. I have a few items I'd like to address. Justin and the Public Works crew, thanks for all you do. Happy Public Works Week. Kind of like the silent department that makes everything happen in the city, so thanks. Chief, congrats on the official badge. The stars look better than the stripes on your previous shirt, and congrats to Sergeant Fiera on this promotion. Selinda, all I'm going to say is way to hit the ground running. It's going to be pretty awesome to actually be able to pass the city budget on time, so... And with that, thanks to all the department heads for working with Selinda to get the budget on time, so thank you for that. Just want to say congrats to Juan Carlos and for Caleb Ray, that's his name.
Caleb K.
That's really the spirit of Escalon for, and quite honestly, putting others before self really speaks volume to our community, so thank you to both of those individuals. I want to give a really big shout-out to the, and a thank you to all the coaches and volunteers that made baseball and softball happen this year at the community center. Congrats to all the All-Stars. The All-Star teams were named today, I believe, and so congrats to those All-Stars, and really want to give a special shout-out to three of the All-Stars that I know personally, Elias Crummick, Dominic Trejo, and Rhett Denbrave. So don't forget, you represent the city of Escalon and make us proud, to all the All-Stars team, All-Star teams. Two last things. This was brought up kind of at the beginning of the meeting, but I wanted to see what council felt about a future agenda item, setting a policy in place for change order contingencies on projects moving forward. The city manager and I had a discussion earlier today, and previously it was that the city manager was awarded, was given the authority of $50,000 for a change order contingency, no matter what the size of the project. And when you look at the first project that we approved, that was about 33% of the total cost, which typically you like to stay within 10% contingency. So I think it's a matter of looking at the policy and actually formally adopting a policy moving forward, and I just wanted to see if we could discuss that at a future council meeting. It's just important to get something in writing instead of just giving a blank check, and this is nothing against city manager or Public Works, this is just following purchasing procedures that I'm used to working within the public sector, so...
I think that discussion, I mean, that deserves a discussion. That makes sense to me.
That makes sense. I think any way we can make sure that we're, you know, being fiscally responsible is a good idea.
And if it, I mean, it's construction, things happen, but if we exceed that 10% authority, then it's the responsibility of the city manager or Public Works to come back to council, make us aware, and then we can grant expanded authority, but at least the conversation is had, because right now, I don't think that conversation's ever been had, so thank you for that. And last, but certainly not least, I know many can see the shirt that I'm wearing today. I'm wearing it really for a multitude of reasons. Celebrate our police chief, celebrate Juan Carlos and his heroism, Caleb K.'s honesty, but Monday is Memorial Day, and everybody thinks it's the unofficial start of summer, which it is, but just remember, our freedom is never free, and there are a lot of families and loved ones out there that, and military, that have paid the ultimate sacrifice, which is why we remember Memorial Day. So for, and this past Saturday was Armed Forces Day, so thank you to all of our veterans, all of our armed forces, and especially thank you to our community members whose family members have paid the ultimate sacrifice for the freedoms that we enjoy the most. for the freedoms that we enjoy the most. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Walker.
Um, I'll keep it a little short, but I do have a question for Justin. I know that there's a rework of the, of the Taco Bell exit coming up, but in the meantime, I know that there's some potholes in that exit that, and now the rainy season's over, is it possible to get a temporary fix on those sometime soon?
Yeah, definitely, we'll address that in the next few days.
Okay, awesome. Uh, congratulations, Chief. I'd say welcome to the team, but you've been here, so. But I'm glad that we have you at the forefront of our team, so, thank you so much. And besides that, that's all I have. Oh, have a very safe Memorial Day weekend. It is kind of the start of the summer, and you're gonna see a lot of people out, so be safe with Memorial Day and graduation both coming up very shortly. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Engel.
Oh, yeah. Just wanna echo that to the chief, congratulations. I have high hopes and expectations for you, but so far, we're off to a good start, so. Did wanna address something to staff, something I heard for the discussion between Lions Club and Main Street Park. It would be my recommendation to staff that they reached out to the board of directors for the Lions Club rather than a member. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I have a few things. First off, you know, congratulations, Chief, it's, same, I have the same feeling, I think you're gonna do a great job, I can already see it. So appreciate what you've already done for the community, and I look forward to what you're doing in the future. It's nice to see our community coming together as a team, so I wanna say thank you to all you guys for, for having good discussions in here, and even when sometimes things are, you know, heated, having real good civil interaction, I think, is a real key. So thank you for, for debating in a rational manner. Other than that, I wanted to also say, you know, congratulations, well, I shouldn't say congratulations, but more like a thank you to Juan, and I think that's amazing that he stepped in and saved a life. And so I think that's, that's, that's something that very few people really do, so it's, it's nice to see that happen in our community. I wanted to ask if we could have a few discussions on, I had three things to throw to the council, I wanted to see if I can get back and have a discussion on. One was trying to find some solutions, some ideas for hedging against our unfunded liabilities issue, seeing if the community, whoever, I don't care who it is, has an idea, comes up with an idea that can help us if we had a scenario where the stock market came down, it would potentially cause the local citizens to have to have a lot out of pocket. So if we had a hedging, a ability to hedge, it would allow us to really have a lot more flexibility, so we don't have a repeat of like 2008. So it's something I'd wanna discuss if we could.
That's in reference to Kelpers, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. To.
I can support that. I think we all wanna try to figure out a solution, and the question is, what's the solution?
Well, that's why I wanna have a discussion, to see if there's ideas out there that haven't been brought to the forefront, so that, you know, there's protecting people's retirements, we have the potential for protecting the, the community, and, you know, getting in a position before it happens, so being proactive versus reactive.
I think it's definitely worth a discussion.
Then the other is coming up with a game plan to give to the rec commission as far as like coach appreciation stuff. I think it's important that when people volunteer their time, that they are recognized on some level for, for putting in that effort. And I'd like to see maybe a better effort from our side to kind of pat them on the back, so to speak.
What did they get currently?
I'm not quite sure, 'cause.
They had a Facebook post.
Yes.
Really?
Which is more than they've gotten, and like, that's.
Yeah, I mean, they're volunteering so many hours of their time.
I'd like to get them at least a thank you card. I mean, it doesn't have to be fancy, just something that says, hey, you know, thank you for putting your time out there, and the kids appreciate it, and that kinda stuff.
Pass along to rec commission to task them with a little bit of effort on that point?
I would support that.
Yeah, well, Jenny, thanks for putting the thank you, but I think they need a little bit more.
And then the last one was, I wanted to go ahead and, and I know it was more of a contentious conversation in some aspects, but I, I do wanna finish the discussion on the American Red Cross contract that we had. I, I think it's important that we look at this thing from all aspects, and as a community, come to the best decision moving forward. So I was hoping we could have a discussion on that, finish that.
I can support that.
Thank you.
Can we invite the Red Cross administrator to come to the meeting and present his contract to us, so we can ask that individual question?
The more information, the better. Well, I haven't, I don't have an issue with that.
Thank you.
Depending on how it fits in, obviously, with the budget coming up and everything with these asks, if you can.
Yeah.
Make sure that we are conscientious of, you know, not a meeting going till 12 kinda thing. Put them in where we can appropriately fit them in and timeline it for what you can for the information that's requested, so we can fit them in nicely. To our agenda, that'd be great.
I should qualify that, yeah.
But I'm pretty sure we all are doing that, but I just wanna throw it out there.
Other than that, I just wanted to go ahead and, and thank those that have put their lives on the line for us, and, and have sacrificed, paid the ultimate sacrifice for our ability to be free. So I think it's something that we should all pause and, and really appreciate. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I've been, I heaped on a bunch of praises on that side of the dais, but I didn't say anything over here, but I just wanted to say thank you to Jenny and Frank and Jalen. I don't want them to feel left out.
Thank you. I'll try and keep it brief. The presentations tonight make me proud to say that I'm mayor of Escalon. I think the council members, we all feel the same way, to be honored to be up here, to say that we've got some great citizens in our community, and these acts just show time and time again, there's a lot of things that happen in our town that aren't recognized as a certificate of recognition or citizen of the month, that happen that we all are aware of a lot of things out there. And it just goes to show you, we have a great community here, and it just continues to prove why we wanna live here. And keep up the great work. Holiday weekend is coming up, school is letting out shortly thereafter. Just a quick reminder to stay safe out there, keeping out on the roads, it's time for celebration, but then some dangerous times if people choose to get on the road, consider yourself, get yourself a designated driver, be careful what you do out there, and keep our town safe throughout these exciting times in the next month or so. And with that, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. Thank you for everybody coming, thanks.